Good evening, everyone. Call for order today, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-third, six P M. Please raise and join for the place of allegiance.
I place allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In due republic, over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and evergreen and just for all.
Robo call, Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Aliaga.
Here.
Clerk Newbeck here. Trustee Morocco.
Here.
Trustee Nalomothu, here. Trustee Ritchie.
Here.
Trustee Stone.
Here.
And Treasurer Brown is absent this evening. We have a quorum.
Okay. Any other motion to approve our agenda?
A move to approve the agenda as presented.
Need a second?
Support.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving along. Board, uh, board of public, public comments, uh, no, excuse me. Board and public announcements. Board members and individuals in the audience make, make a statement containing information about recent upcoming event. Madam Clerk?
I just wanted to mention the 2023 Know Has kickoff starts this month. The first collection date will be April twenty-ninth at Pine Knob Music Theater this year, which is great. I did want to also tell the residents, though, that there'll be an increase for the fee. Uh, well, it will be increased from ten dollars up to fifteen dollars this year, and you must pre-register and pay the fees prior to coming on site. And that's all I have.
Any other board members? No? Any individuals in the public? Anyone? Okay. Moving along. Public comment. Anyone in the board would like to? Anyone in public? Anyone online? Okay. We don't have a public hearing, so presentations of report, presentations by, uh, Chief Pichet. We have today our fire department promotion of Lieutenant Moskovic, so Chief Pichet is gonna make the presentation.
Well, good evening. Um, I want to thank everybody tonight to come celebrate the promotion of Lieutenant Moskovic to that of shift captain. And I want to thank the township board yet again for allowing the fire department these opportunities to come up here and celebrate the achievements of our personnel, so it means a lot. Also, a big thank you to the firefighters and family and friends that also came out tonight to, uh, support Derek. The promotion of a shift lieutenant to that of shift captain is a great moment of honor and pride for Derek, his family, and Independence Fire. Tonight's promotional ceremony here at Township Hall during a board meeting continues a great tradition of publicly recognizing the great efforts of our personnel. I would like to briefly share with everyone what it takes to become an officer for I F D. Interested officer candidates must endure a competitive... Come up closer, yeah. Interested officer candidates must endure a competitive testing process that includes a written exam, oral interviews conducted by outside fire service professionals, a board of review process that measures and grades each candidate based on their level of formal education, training and certifications, performance evaluations and work history, discipline and attendance history, and finally, the candidate is reviewed by the fire chief, myself, for their overall capacity and readiness to be promoted to the officer level. The candidate is then placed onto a promotional eligibility list in the, in a descending order, the highest point earner to the lowest, based on their overall cumulative testing scores. Once selected and promoted from the eligibility list, the new probationary officer must serve a six-month probationary period to ensure the performance will meet the needs of the position. It's during this time the new officer is coached and developed to perform to the high level expected of an I F D officer. The probationary shift captain will be required to satisfy several core competencies during the probationary period, such as: the ability to lead, supervise, and manage the fire and life safety concerns of Independence Township; the ability to promote and demand the safe execution of all fire and EMS operations for our personnel and the public; the ability to inspire and teach advanced fire and life safety best practices to the community, business owners, and our personnel; the ability to perform and promote excellent customer service to all we serve in the community; and be able to demonstrate excellent decision-making abilities both in emergencies and non-emergency situations. And finally, the probationary shift captain must demonstrate their ability to promote and operate within a team concept and ensure the vision and goals of the fire department are being met every day. I would like to share some brief background information about Derek. Derek has served as a firefighter paramedic for the past twenty-one years with I F D, the last four as a shift lieutenant. He is state certified in fire officer one and two. He's attained a master's degree. He is certified in incident command system, and he has specialized training both in rope and trench rescue. Additionally, Lieutenant Moskovic assists and is involved at our department in the following. He serves on the fire department training committee. He also served at one point for the local fire union executive board as a vice president. And what he doesn't know, he's gonna be leading our fire equipment group here in the next few weeks, is a new job position. Uh, but the one I would like to speak about, a little more personal about, is we developed a public outreach and a customer service committee over the last year and a half in the fire department, and we pulled together about six, seven guys. Derek headed that up, and that group literally knocked it out of the park in year one with the different functions they put together for the community on behalf of the fire department to serve the community. Uh, one of the real big ones that we, uh, that Derek oversaw and made sure it happened was the fire department open house. First time in the history of Independence Fire that they held a fire prevention week open house for the community. Some of you may have been there, but Derek oversaw that, made sure that came to fruition, and, uh, that was a great success to the community, and we look to do that, uh, every year moving forward. So, uh, without his guidance, his leadership, and kind of pushing everybody to make sure that happened, there's a lot of logistics involved in making sure it happened, but, uh, he did a great job, and we appreciate your leadership in doing that. Also, you should know that Derek wrestled competitively, and I hope I got this right? At Indiana University, while earning his master's degree. After college, he served as wrestling coach for Clarkston High School. Uh, furthermore, Derek has an extensive background in building construction. He and his father run a successful construction company that Derek is involved in off duty from the fire department. His construction background has and will continue to serve him and our personnel well. He uses his knowledge of construction to teach and train our firefighters to understand and be aware of the hazards of various construction types and what the effects of a fire can have on them. Derek will help ensure our firefighters are as safe as they can be inside fighting a structure fire moving forward. His combination of experience on the job, his education and training, having competed at a high level in a college sport, helping run a construction business have provided him a great foundation and a wealth of knowledge. All of these are key ingredients to be a successful leader and be a successful shift captain. But most importantly, when we promote one of our own to that of an officer in the I F D, we require that they must come in with a great work ethic, have demonstrated a career of great character and integrity, and have conducted themselves in a manner to have established exceptional credibility amongst their peers. With that, I can probably say that Lieutenant Derek Moskovic has successfully met all these expectations and is most deserving tonight to be promoted and sworn in to shift captain with I F D this evening. Next phase, we're gonna have Captain Bridgler present his new badge. The next thing we'd like to present Derek is, uh, his new helmet. So for those that don't know, um, in the fire service, helmet colors have significance. Uh, our firefighters wear black helmets, our lieutenants wear yellow helmets, and our captains wear red helmets. The significance being that while they're on scene, it's crystal clear to everybody who's in charge, who the bosses are on scene. So this has great significance, not only internally in our own fire department, but when our personnel arrive at other scenes, mutual aid, where mutual aid comes into our community to help us on a structure fire, they can immediately see the color of the helmet and know that who they're speaking to relative to ranking in the fire service. So with this, I'd like to present you your red helmet, sir. One more little piece. Uh, so again, for those who don't know, we just established a retiree, retiree wall um, within the fire station in the apparatus room of Station One. We made plaques, so we have two different colored plaques on the wall, and you will see that the plaque has the firefighter's badge number, their rank, their name, and the year they started on the job. If you're currently still working in the fire department, your plaque is red. The day that you retire, you would be presented with a bronze plaque. The bronze plaque, you will take your red plaque off the wall, place your bronze one up on the wall for eternity that you were a part of this Independence Township Fire Department. So for tonight, I'm gonna present you with your new plaque, and it's gonna go on the wall as captain.
And if they ask Carrie Newbeck to come down and swear you in officially?
Would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
Constitution of this state.
And I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
The office of.
Shift captain.
Shift captain.
And in for the township of Independence.
And in for the township of Independence.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
And state of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
I just want to, um, first of all, um, I'm not used to talking about myself, so... And on the way over here, I was thinking of the things I should say or the things I should write down in my speech, and I wasn't able to write anything down because my wife told me I had drive. And then, and my, my daughter kept asking me questions like, hey, are they gonna shoot off guns? Are they gonna, are they...? And then, just worry about the food after, Dad, he'll be alright. And my one, my one son, Mac, said, uh, eh, don't worry about it, Dad, if you're nervous, it's not like wrestling in a state tournament. And, and even though you're gonna be in charge of these guys, and they're all four foot taller than you, you'll, you'll be fine. So, that leads me into, um, I guess, you know, one of the things I've always learned and I was taught from my father, who can't be here tonight, he's with my mom, she's actually, uh, having a procedure done, um, is that, you know, no matter where you get in any of these steps, and Chief Pichet, you always gotta take a moment and thank the people that have been around you, because you, you can't get there and can't accomplish what you want to do without others around you. So I'm gonna give it my best shot real quick. I definitely want to thank the board for doing this, um, for Chief Pichet, for changing the environment and the culture in our department, and the board promoting it. It means a lot to these guys here. You can see it, they get excited for it now. Um, and it, and it's, it's brought us together all the way around. The leadership and enthusiasm is like no, no other before, when I've been here for twenty-one years. And so I want to thank the board for doing this. Um, I'd like to thank, obviously, my family, who, uh, my parents, who supported me from a very young age, always taught me to believe in myself, keep moving forward, to remember to be kind and honest, work hard, and also, you know, um, treat others like you want to be treated. Uh, I have a, I have a, my brother's here, my other brother's not, but my oldest brother, Dean, who's always been a role model, most of you know him, uh, Dr. Moskovic, have always, you know, been a, a great example of a, a role model to me growing up, I've always tried to follow it. Um, I also want to, uh, thank the, the guys here, the standing here, as we joke around and we laugh and we talk about standing on the wall, um, kind of like Game of Thrones, but the truth of the matter is, they do. They're, they're, they are, uh, they are amazing, they're smart, they're talented, professional, they're kind, they're honest, and, uh, and they would do anything for anybody at a given time. And then, and it's an honor to be given, or to be, have a chance at this position, and, uh, I want to thank you guys for what you do every day and, you know, what you've done in the past, even just being here tonight, it's, it's, it's an honor. So, I also want to thank the, uh, my, my family, my, my, my son, Stone, my daughter, Macy, my son, uh, Mac, they're all, they're all here tonight. And I'll tell you, as my wife says, that, uh, you know, truly in the end, there is, the, the kids are the ones that kind of sacrifice, you know, the, when, when you, when you, you work twenty-four hour shifts, and you leave, and you miss the parties, or you miss engagements and stuff like that. But as my wife always says, the benefit is, when you're gone for twenty-four hours, you, you walk in the door and they treat you like Santa Claus, and say, you know, daddy's home. And as hard as it is to leave, it makes you more, even more excited to come home. And, uh, and I know all these guys feel the same way. When they come on duty, they, they look at it like, hey, I'm not only serving my family, I'm serving the family of the community here, and it's a great responsibility. And, and their families accept it, and they, and they support it, and they make fun of you, like my kids do. And, and, and lastly, um, my wife Shannon, who, uh, is my high school sweetheart, we met at sixteen, and we're still together, even when I told her that I was gonna leave my professional career, uh, with my two degrees and become a fireman. She said, I'm gonna stay. I'm just joking, she, she always supported me. But truly, the wives are the ones too, that when you, when you come in, you know, we always talk about, like I said, they're the ones that pick up it at home, and they're the single moms, and they support us, and, uh, and it means a lot to these guys, um, and they all feel the same way. And so, I guess, in the end, just by summing it all up, you know, in order for us, all the, any of us to get up here, you know, and for me, I've needed all that, and so I just want to thank everybody. So thank you.
For five minutes.
Yes.
Okay?
Take a recess.
Okay, we're gonna take a recess for five minutes.
If we could, uh, have all the firefighters come on up and we'll get a group picture with Derek, please?
That's fun. You've got forum to have a bigger event.
Yeah.
You know?
More special.
This isn't a...
Should have board meetings there?
Yeah.
It's good.
It's good, yeah.
When they do that, you know?
Yeah, it's very, very nice.
What is it with this freaking computer? Every time I touch it, I lose.
You want to give them a few minutes to walk out the door?
Yeah.
You start talking, they're not gonna be able to hear you, I don't think.
Up their head now.
There they go.
Ron stood up, I got scared.
Oh.
He got scared. Bouncer Ron got up.
So you know what he does now? Shift captain.
Yeah.
He leads the shift? I call to find out. So when you're the lieutenant there at a fire station, when you're the captain, you, all the fire stations, you're the three captains, three shifts. Nobody else? For a second. So he is in charge of all the fire staff, everybody during that time block. Who we went to now, you know?
Feel free to move off now, it's not like...
We don't have, um, let me carry over the postponed agenda items, so we're going to, moving on to consent agenda. Number one, a request to approve the board of trustees' regular meetings minutes of April fourth, twenty twenty-three. Number two, request to approve that April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, check round for seven hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Twenty-five cents, ratified that March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, payroll of two hundred ninety-six thousand ninety-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. And the March twenty twenty-three wire E F T transfer activity of four million four hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-seven hundred and seventy-four, seventy-four cents. Three, request to appoint the board committee member safety pad I battery committee of... Number four, request to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three West Nile virus mosquito burn disease C V T reimbursement program. And number five, request to approve the Brady Lodge rental with alcohol, Houston, June tenth, twenty twenty-three. And that's all for the consent agenda, and any other motion to approve the consent agenda? As President?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Need a second? Support? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Carrie. We don't have any, nothing for, uh, any item removed for, from the consent agenda, so we go into regular business. Number one, we have a request to approve the twenty twenty-three budget amendment, uh, personal rec, capital improvement plan from Derek Smith. How you doing, Derek?
Good. Good evening. Thank you for asking. I'm gonna try to bring up some pictures here real quick, if not, I'll just describe, describe it for you. Hold on one second. I think that's it. Now, if I can find the pictures. Oh, usually they're at the bottom here, right? Okay. So, um, tonight I'm looking to, uh, move some of our capital improvement funds around within the department. I don't know who that guy is. But, uh...
Maybe he's gonna give a donation.
Yeah, maybe. We could use... So, our capital improvement plan was improved, or was approved for the next three years, and one of the things that, um, we knew was upcoming was replacing the roofs at the carriage house and the baseball, uh, fields one and two restroom facility. We had planned this out for two thousand and twenty-five, however, as you can see by the pictures here, we are starting to lose some shingles on the carriage house, and then also water because of this, um, this valley in the roof, water, we get ice dams off this, and water is backed up under the shingles and started to warp the roof on the outside of the building. And unfortunately, the water has made its way to the inside of the building, you can see the water stains here, and it's starting to crack the walls on the interior of the facility here as well. So what I'm asking for in this particular amendment is to move, uh, the money from twenty twenty-five into twenty twenty-three so we can... So what I'm asking for in this particular amendment is to move the money from twenty twenty-five into twenty twenty-three, so we can get the roofs replaced on both of these facilities. They were done around the same time, many, many years ago, I couldn't even find the information of how long ago it was done. So, prices have gone up, uh, we know that, uh, if we do both buildings at one time, we can save a little bit of money on mobilization costs instead of having one done and then having a company come out and do the other one, roughly the same age roofs. So we'd like to move that money, uh, move it into twenty twenty-three to be able to take care of both of these issues. The second one is, we were scheduled to buy a new Toro field grooming machine for our baseball fields. But as I mentioned, when we approved the capital improvement plan, as time goes on, things come up and we re-prioritize where our money needs to go. And so this is where we would like to move the second group of money, was an approved item for that Toro machine of forty thousand dollars. I'd like to re-appropriate that into Sashaba Plains. We've done so much work there over the winter time and into the spring, but once we turned the water on at the park, um, we realized our drinking fountain here on the left sprung a bunch of leaks. It's also got a bunch of rust coming through on the bottom here, so we want to be able to replace that drinking fountain. And also, we, we have new trim to go around all the doors, and we painted the doors of the restrooms, however, however we realized that behind that trim, the frame of the door itself, the jam is rusted in, or is rotted in behind it, so we have nothing to tack the new trim to. So we'd like to order two new doors, uh, the weatherproof doors that we need on an outdoor facility like this aren't as cheap as a normal home door, they're probably three, four grand a piece, plus the installation, so it could get to be a little bit pricey. And then also, our basketball court, we'd like to get this sealed, and there is some grass growing through a crack right here, we'd like to get that filled in, sealed and painted. And there's a lot of other things that, as we go along, um, we've kind of burned through our building and grounds budget that we had for the year. Um, we've had a lot of trees removed, we've had brush piles removed, holes in the chain link fence around the facility have been replaced. Uh, we're adding two new handicap parking spots, we removed some of the trees near the ADA accessible sidewalk that gets back to the athletic fields. We removed those trees, so we could add a few more, um, handicap parking spaces up closer to that accessible walkway. And as we go through and really try to, to rejuvenate this park facility, we're kind of finding more things that need to be done. And in our eyes, it's probably more important than finding a ball field grooming machine that we've been able to live without to this point. So, those are the things that were being asked, uh, to be completed tonight in the amendment. Thirty thousand dollars from twenty twenty-five into twenty twenty-three to replace the roofs, and another forty thousand from the field grooming machine into Sashaba Plains to continue our efforts of improving that park. So, that's where we're at.
Thank you, Derek. Um, just have a comment, um, you know, it's in my heart for, you know, many months that I want to do something for Sashaba Plains. And that I was last weekend on Sashaba Plains and I saw some of those issues, and I talked to Derek this week, I mean, last week, and I told Derek we need to something about it, but he was on top of it, he was working on top of it, and Derek told me he's gonna bring, present, addressing those issues. And I talked to several people last weekend, and they told me, I mean, the, the point right there is need to be fixed, I mean, it's rusted, you know, need to update some of the, as we know, the bathrooms, Derek already working the bathroom, but we're talking about the doors. And I verified that, and need, need to address soon, and I think, uh, those renovations, those updates is gonna improve the infrastructure for our parks, and it's gonna bring a good sign for our local residents from Sashaba, and maybe they utilize the park. I was very surprised last weekend, it was like sixty people around there, they were utilizing the soccer field, and I was very, very impressed the amount of people that utilize Sashaba Plains. On, over the weekend, it was a lot of people even playing in the basketball court, the off course. It's a crack there, need to be fixed that and painted, it needs some update, but I, I, I see that a lot of people enjoy the park, and I think by approving this, this updates is gonna, you know, fix infrastructure and, you know, the park is gonna be in good standard for our community, so I hope you guys support this, I think this is a very good thing for our community. Any other questions or concerns?
Couple of comments.
Sure. Justin, come on.
From the builder's point of view, just, those shingles were on there when, before we even built the first senior center on the carriage house, because they're, first of all, I know that, because I was part of the build, but then they're three tabs, so that's how old they are. The roof damage will be fixed by the roof, but the ice damming problem's not gonna be, so I can talk to you on the side about what we can do to prevent future roof damming, so that the problem doesn't happen again. The notes on the park, one thing I just want to mention is, you know, when you show the pictures up there, is that when you do replace those doors, I would suggest that you do them with a fireproof fiberglass door, uh, so that we don't ever have the rust problem again, you know, steel doors are outdated. And the reason I say a fire door is because the, they fill them full of concrete, so they, they can't, they don't dent, they're pretty much indestructible, and then they're, they're weather resistant forever. And they come in a composite wood jam that won't rot, so I can hook you up with some people that supply that exact door that will get like the longest and abusive longevity out of them. And then the door opener, we should have that put on the inside.
Yeah.
So that it's out of the weather, just a couple of things, and I can help you with any of that if you want, with some people that provide those specific things, if you don't have them.
Well, I can go back real quick, we looked into a metal roof as well for both the carriage house and the ball fields, and we were looking at double the price.
Yeah, for sure.
And part of the reason why that ice dam happens, and we've got the same problem in our family cabin up north, is there's a pine tree at the front entrance of the carriage house, and all of the needles from the pine tree end up in that valley, and that, when they freeze, it, it stops the progress of water of coming down the roof, and it, it backlogs itself up underneath the shingles. So we won't really know the extent of the damage until we get up underneath there, but, um, I gave myself a little bit of a cushion, the, the lowest quote we got just on the carriage house, I think, was just under twelve thousand. So about the same square footage of the other building too, so we're twenty-four, that leaves me about six grand left over, if we peel that off and find we need to replace some of the wood underneath it, that, uh, I've got a little bit of extra money to be able to do that to.
So I reviewed the shingle options, the one, the first option with the certainty, pro mark, landmark.
Which is what we just put on Brady Lodge.
You don't, yeah, we don't need to go up the two more levels, we won't get any more wear out of them by doing that, wouldn't be, you know, fiscally makes sense to go up any more levels than the, the, the one that they offered with the certainty, you know, shingle.
And I think, I think it's a third, both models are a thirty-year shingle, so.
The other one costs more, but it's more about the dimensional look of it, the colors, not necessarily the wear, so I think you're on the right path with the one you selected for sure on that, you know?
Well, and I, I think the pine tree is gonna have to go. Unfortunately, you know, we'll find something else to plant there, maybe a couple of arborvitae's or something to fill in the visual aesthetics, but that pine tree, like a lot of our facilities, they, when it was planted, it was probably a six footer, and now it's a thirty-five footer, and it's a problem, so.
And I just want to say, I know how much you wanted that tractor for grooming the thing, so I appreciate the sacrifice, um, because I know it is something you, you really wanted to do to improve that thing, but seeing the need for, um, Sashaba Plains and identifying that, I appreciate that.
Sure. Well, another year down the road, we've been able to manage without it to this point, it's just, as a point of reference, we renovated all seven ball diamonds when I first got here back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. And if we want to not have to go back and renovate them again in the future, a machine like that will help us keep the edges clean, keep the, the dirt at a level plain field, and it'll help all of our facilities, but it's something that we can wait on another moment, for sure.
Sure. Claire Newbeck?
This is just a question, it's not so much a comment, but I'm wondering in place of the water fountain, if we can look into getting the, like we have inside the building, some sort of a water filling station with the.
We started doing that at all of our parks, um, adding a water bottle filling station to those facilities as well. The location of that makes it very difficult, and we haven't had a lot of luck with the water bottle filling stations that are exposed to the outdoor elements. The sensors get clogged, they just, you've got to be able to access them from behind the wall, which, at our senior center, we had a big hole in the wall in our men's room for a good couple of years until we had that patched, and then you can't access the panel behind it. When it's, when you have a, one of those filling stations on the exterior, you have to be able to access that panel from the inside, especially in an outdoor facility, to be able to drain the water out of it in the winter time, so it doesn't freeze and corrode. We looked into it, I'd love to have one there, but it just doesn't make long-term sense. And, and thanks for bringing it up, one of the things that I have wanted to do, and this is from years of running Independence Fest and being one of the last people in the park to pick up all the plastic bottles that are there at the end of the night, I'd like to really start being more environmentally conscious at a lot of our parks, and eliminating the plas, the use of plastic bottles and, you know, passing out water bottles at our events that people can use to fill, but they're, they're a challenge, when they're exposed to the outdoor elements here in Michigan, it's really, really difficult to stay on top of them, to keep them working.
They don't really make them for?
They're starting to get better at it, but, again, the location of where that's at, on the backside of that building, they have a lot of freestanding models now that you can get. They even come with, uh, dog bowls at the bottom, so you can, you know, you can fill them up for your pets too. But it, they're just, the longevity of it for what you pay for those units, and, and to get a unit there, we'd have to, you know, we'd have to redo the plumbing and have it snaked underground, and it reminds you that, I think that we've got bigger plans for this park that we'd like to do in the future. And one of those plans is completely eliminating this building and getting into a more modern restroom facility. So I'm very cautious about, if we write grants and that's two years down the road to be able to replace this building, I don't want to get the best of the best that's there now and tear it all out and start over again, I, I'm just trying to get stuff that makes economical sense, that's also serviceable and looks nice for now, until we can, until we can get the money to be able to replace the whole thing, I'm trying to be a little bit more economical about it, so.
Fossa with a hose.
We grew up that way, right? Drinking out of the garden hose?
Yeah. Um, I want to add something. Um, just so the board knows, um, we put the new grills already, two new grills in Sashaba Plains, we trimmed the trees, it's looking nicer. Derek has been working with the parks, the full-time guy's working in some renovations there, and it looks very nice, you can see, uh, before and after, it looks really nice, and he's gonna be replacing one more grill very soon, right?
Yep, it's the one that's by the basketball court. The weather's kind of playing tricks on us right now, we had a couple of really nice days where we were starting to install and pull out a lot of, you know, concrete underground, it's tough to pop out of place and get concrete to cure when it's thirty-five degrees outside, so it's still early in the spring, just asking people to be a little bit patient with us while we, uh, hopefully get into some nicer weather and we can make the rest of the improvements. We've got plans to paint all the picnic tables, and as I mentioned before, spraying the pavilion and, uh, restaining that. It's just, uh, it's all weather dependent at this point, so.
Yeah. And this is just for the doors, because inside in the bathroom, you guys already fixed some of the.
We've already replaced all the, all the kick plates, painted the walls, we fixed all the, all the utilities, the toilets have been repaired, I think we have a new one in one of the facilities as well. Um, yeah, the insides look pretty nice, there's a couple of cracks in the tile, but they're serviceable and they cleaned up nice, so they're definitely in much better shape than what they were in, is it a perfect world there? Not yet, but, um, it's definitely, uh, a much more pleasant, um, appearance than what it was, so.
Yes, and I can see, because like I said, this weekend, I see a lot of people look like packing, was like, to me, it seems like it was sixty people there enjoying, and you can see now it's more like open to people to come and stay there and enjoy, you can see it's a lot of updates already, and the updates is gonna be continued, and I think this proposal is gonna help for Sashaba Plains to keep improving. So, any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Happy to do it.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone from the public? No? Anyone online that would like to have any questions or concerns about this proposal tonight? Okay. Anyone would like to make a motion?
Would approve the reprogramming of the parks, recreation and seniors capital improvement plan, and approve the twenty twenty-three budget amendment number seventeen as presented. I'll second.
Okay. Simple majority. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Derek.
Thank you.
Next, we have our TPW director, Department of Public Work, Dave McKee. How you doing, David?
I'm doing well, how is everybody tonight?
Woo! Yeah.
It's good.
Good?
Yeah.
That's good. Good. Um, the first thing I have on the agenda tonight for you to consider is, um, this is, uh, for the benefit of our new trustees that we have, this is every year, right around this time, I'm here for this. This is for C C, the first thing on the, on the agenda is for C C T V of our, our sewer system, uh, it's preventative maintenance, it's part of our asset management plan, so I was telling, talking to Matt a little bit about it earlier, so, just through a recap, in, um, twenty fourteen, it's twenty fourteen, the state of Michigan, um, Eagle required an asset management plans be put in place for sewer and stormwater infrastructure. Every municipal, municipality had to do it. So they did fund this too, and there was approximately just under a half a billion dollars, I said a billion earlier, but it was a half a billion dollars that the state provided all the communities, there was no cost to us, um, and to, so we could do an asset management of our sewer system, indoor stormwater system, you could, at the time of application, you could decide where you wanted to spend the money. Um, Independence Township, we received just a little or two million dollars for ours, and we did, plowed it all into the sewer side of things. And what that meant was that we inspected all our sewer pipe that's in the township that was installed from nineteen, nineteen ninety-six and older. Might have been ninety-four, so I apologize for that, but it was ninety-six or ninety-four, and older was eligible to use this money to investigate the sewer. That is to TV it, C C T V it, closed caption television, go down there, inspect it, they grade it, um, look for deficiencies, problems, cracks, broken pipe, and we found a lot, you know? And our system is relatively new in the water and sewer world, um, we have a newer system, so, um, we ended up that, uh, at the end of the day, they estimated there was approximately, I think it was fourteen or fifteen million dollars in repairs that they identified that we needed to do. So at that time, um, the board was, uh, you know, gave me clear direction on that, that we were able to fast-track a lot of the, uh, inspections, repairs and get it moving forward, and, uh, we were in a good spot to do that financially, we still are, and we will be moving forward, so that's always a good thing. So, tonight, the first item that we have is to continue the C C T V inspections for sewer pipe that was newer than nineteen ninety-six. So we just carried the lessons that we learned and what we had to do with the old stuff, have to do it for the new stuff, so we budgeted money every year to do this, and, um, if you look back historically, we have cut down the expenditures, because we're getting caught up with our C C T Ving, I mean, we're still doing it, we do it every year, it's, usually takes about four years to get everything looked at, and then when you get done, you start over. You just, it's just a continuous cycle that keeps going on. So the first thing on the agenda tonight is for the C C T V inspections that we use Pipeline Management, they are a contractor company out of Milford, and they have, they did all our saw work for us back in thirteen to seventeen. They're vetted out through the county, and then the pricing that we have is all competitively bid through Oakland County's cooperative purchasing agreement, and tonight, we're just gonna keep this program going, this is the first part of it right here.
Any question from board member, from Steve?
Just a comment, I guess, um, one of the things that's, I think, really important about this is since there's a lot of, of lakes and water in our area, that one of the main things we want to prevent is groundwater, uh, going into the sewer system and being shipped down to, uh, Detroit's, uh, sewer system, because we get charged for every gallon that goes into the sewer system, so. So one of the things you want to make sure is that we don't have, like, some river, uh, big crack in the, in the sewer someplace where water's just running in, and, and we're getting charged for that.
Do you remember some of the videos I brought in here before, it just looked like, just clear, clean waters, like Niagara Falls, just pouring?
No, of course.
Twenty-four seven, you don't know about that, we get charged for every.
In case the public's wondering why we're, why we're cammering the, uh, the pipes and everything, it's, it's, you know, so we can inspect it and repair it, and it's not so much that we're worried that the sewer, uh, refuse is being taken away, it's more, we don't want, uh, other, uh, you know, groundwater, whatever, breaking into the sewer and having to pay for that over time as well, so.
Now, Ron, you brought a good point, it's true, we get charged for the sewage, and we don't want that, and we want to keep our infrastructure in good standards, for sure.
That's for sure.
And I know Dave has, has been working really hard with all the guys at TPW. Thank you guys for your work, and of course, this is something that's important, any other questions or concerns? We've done this every year, it's, you know, keep up with our infrastructure, so, and I agree with Ron. Christina Lamato?
I have a quick comment, because you brought up those photos, and, um, they're fascinating, so if they've never. I have a quick comment because you brought up those photos and, um, they're fascinating, so if they've never seen them, I think they should.
Sure.
And it brought up something when you were talking about, um, I remember you talking about all those things that say they're flushable, the flushable wipes and all that and how much damage it does.
Absolutely.
And I, I think it, it would be great for the public to see those photos. I don't know if it's something you put in the paper once or go to schools and show those kids that, you know, everything you're throwing down the toilet, this is what it's doing because I don't, until they realize what happens to it and what it ruins and where it gets stuck, um, you know, I, I think it's that a picture is worth a thousand words kind of thing and, um.
I agree with you. I agree with you a hundred percent on that, you know. The worst thing for sewer systems is those flushable wipes, you know, they, everybody uses them. I mean, you know, it's just, that's the reality of it, but they, they clog up sewer pipes, they jam up pumps and they are a bear to to manage. You know, I really wish they weren't, didn't say flushable on there, but, you know, they, they flush them down there, but, uh, but yeah, I could definitely do that and bring you some, uh, show you some videos or show you some of the issues that we had, we've had here and we have found in the, in that we repaired over the years and, um, it's.
Along with the tennis shoes and mops and everything else.
Beach towels, bowling ball, billiard cue.
He could show you all kinds of weird stuff that's been flushed down.
Money, you know, jewelry, it's.
I think if you.
It's like, how did that get down there, you know?
On a lot of our, a lot of our pumping stations, we change the pumps from regular pumps to grinder pumps because there's so much solids going through there that, uh, that's really non-normal solids, like, you know, mops and different things.
It looks like.
Actually grinds it up, so.
Looks like a mop head, you know, like the old style, the big old long mop head, just only the size of a, you know.
People flush this up.
Pictures I've seen them, it's, they're the size of a, of a small, an SUV. And some of the really big sewers in Detroit or wherever, I have a picture that you're, this is, just will blow your mind, the stuff that comes through there.
Yeah, and I, I don't think it's a good idea, Ron. I mean, if, um, and Terry, too, I think if you guys have time, I mean, I know you went to TPW many times, but maybe Matt, if you can come to TPW sometimes when you have a meeting.
Sure you can email him.
It would be good to see that technology, what he managed, what.
Maybe email him.
A lot of personality. There's a lot of operations for the township. DPW works almost twenty-four seven as well. They do a lot for the township.
We also have videos, too, on the repairs, which I don't want to get ahead of myself, but that's the next, next item on the agenda.
Yeah, absolutely. Right. Any other questions from members of the public? Any questions, concerns, would like to come? Anyone online? Okay, I need a motion.
I move to approve the sewer preventative maintenance services available through Oakland County's Cooperative Purchasing Program, uh, contract awarded to Pipeline Management Company, Inc. of Milford, Michigan, uh, for professional services associated with the CCTV inspections of non-saw grant sewer mains as identified by the uh, Department of Public Works Sanitary Sewer Prevention Maintenance Program and approve the following twenty twenty-three blanket order PO for not to exceed amount of one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, for payment of these services.
I'll second.
Okay, motion has made and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Kerry. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Next one?
So, we've CCTV'd the pipe, we've found some problems, now we're going to repair them. So this is, we keep it separate on here. So part of the saw grant, just to give you the ten thousand foot view of, when they expect each section of pipe, and that's between manhole, that's considered one section of pipe, they score that pipe, that pipe gets a grade from one to five, one being perfect, great, one to five being, uh, you had a major problems, cracks, leaks, uh, joints are pulled apart. So that's the part of the scoring that the CCTV does. So they give us all this information and then we categorize it between the worst and we, obviously, we go after the worst ones first. So when the saw grant was completed, we had a lot of category fives. And we took care of those. We attacked those immediately. Those are the ones we went after first. Those are the ones that could cause a lot of problems down the road. And we were great. We're in such good shape right now. We finished all the category fives. I think there were, last year, we just had a couple of them. This year, we're getting into category fours, um, and there's less of each one as you go down. We were in pretty good shape, you know, considering I said fourteen, fifteen million dollars worth of stuff. Um, if you look at other communities just south of us, older, you know, Waterford, for example, there's, they have years and years and years of work to do there because their system's a lot older than ours, way older than ours. So same thing here with this pipeline management is this repairs. They do also do the repairs. They have a competitively bid contract with Oakland County. We've been using, utilizing that for the eight years that I've been here. And, uh, my predecessor used them for many years prior to that. They do a great job, um, and they do the repairs. So the dollar amount is quite large and if you look on the list, it just is, wow, we're not really getting a lot done. But if you look on the sheet, um, so I'll try to decipher just a couple of things for everybody's aware. Uh, recommended for rehabilitation is the CIPP full. So that's cured and placed pipe full liners. So for instance, that's the trenchless technology they do to repair the pipe between sewer manholes. They're going to line the whole entire pipe in between there and they do it from the manholes. They go down and they put a sock in there. It's like an inverted tube sock and soaked in a resin, like a fiberglass resin. And as they push it through there, it just unfolds itself through the whole pipe. And then they put a device in there that, it's like a big balloon, the whole length, and it blows it up and squeezes it against the the sides of the host pipe, they call it, which is the existing pipe that's been in the ground. And UV light comes on. There's different methods to do it. Sometimes it'll be a UV light and it gets hard in a matter of thirty seconds and the pipe will last fifty years. And, uh, then they'll take a machine, go back in, then they know right where somebody's sewer lead comes out and they just, the machine goes down there and they just zip. Roto-zip and they cut the hole back out, reestablish the lead back into the sewer pipe. So that's why there's expenses, uh, for the repair part of it. Um, and these are all full place, full-length liners, as they call it in the industry here. And, um, that's where we're going to continue on with this maintenance program and, and keep at it. I also have videos on repairs that they do, too.
Full-length liner just means manhole to manhole?
Yeah.
Any questions?
I'm sorry.
All right. Any question for the board? Uh, Claire Newick?
I noticed on, is it page one of the amendment of the contract, it speaks of contract change to extend it from January twenty of twenty-three to January twenty of twenty-five.
Mm-hmm.
Should we include that in the motion?
I'll be back next year for the same thing, if that helps.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, this, due to the dollar amount, we want to stick with the procurement policy, so.
So we don't need to.
We'll always be, always be here at the board to get board approval to do these projects.
Okay.
They extended their contract and it's like, had to put a lot of extra detail in the board packet for, okay, I got confirmation from the county. The contract, the original contract number changed when Oakland County changed to their, they changed their software and it gave it a new contract number and I was like, oh, great. But I confirmed that and I do believe I kept that in the board packet, that this is, yes, it's the same contract. Um, and it's good through twenty-five. And that's typically what these contractors will do is they'll approach Oakland County and they'll say, you want to extend our contract? They'll extend it for additional dollar amount. And Oakland County always says, the price stays the same, right? And they're like, of course. And you're like, okay. Because they already bid it out, so as long as that price stays the same, they're pretty, pretty diligent about that. But Kerry, answer your question. If you feel it needs to be changed now, feel free. Um, I think I answered your question. The contract's good through twenty-five.
Yeah.
But I will be back again in twenty-four to continue with both, with both these things.
Okay, thank you, Kerry. Anyone from the public would like to address to the board? Anyone from online? Okay, any other motion?
Move to approve sewer preventative maintenance services available through Oakland County's Cooperative Purchasing Program Contract awarded to Pipeline Management Company, Inc. of Milford, Michigan. Board number zero zero five nine five two for professional services associated with repair of sewer mains as identified by the Independence Township Saw Grant and for any unforeseen repairs as identified by the Department of Public Works Sanitary Sewer Preventive Maintenance Program and approve the twenty twenty-three blanket order for a PO not to exceed the amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars for payment of these services.
I support. Okay, motion has made and supported by trustee Richie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Lastly. This is coming from me. This is about the request to appoint the board of the committee members for the Residential Open Space Advisory Committee. So what this is basically something that I promised during the last summer during the campaign to bring a, a committee that will look into open spaces, green spaces on township. It was, uh, it was brought my attention during that campaign and I promised people I would do something, what I would involve members that's going to involve in this committee. It was going to bring recommendations to see the, the other side of the coin, concerned citizens that have some concerns about green space and I think, uh, it's a great idea. We have, uh, have a good residency citizens that they apply and I really would like to get you guys support to appoint and, um, some residents, local residents for the township that want to be in this committee, they want to serve and, you know. Sometimes it's difficult to get people commit. They want to serve and they want to volunteer their time. And the reason some residents want to do this is because they care and they're interested to serve and help out and they're giving their time to help us. And I do appreciate that from the bottom of my heart. And tonight I presented that the residents that want to be in this committee. If someone have any board member have questions, um, any concerns about it?
I just have one left on because the, um, addresses were blacked out.
The addresses?
Are they pretty much, um, spread out around the township?
We, we done it this before, I think.
Yeah, the, the, the unredacted ones were, um, not, not in the packet, but they were in the, uh, confidential addendum.
Yeah. Well, either way, I didn't ma- I didn't map them all out to see. Are they pretty spread out around the township?
There are.
Okay, that's all I, that's all I wanted to check. Is they're all not, you know,
so I.
All from the southwest corner or anything?
Literally, because I know some of the people.
Some of the people, too.
There's at least three, three people, four people that live in rural areas. There's two of them that live really close to downtown Clarkston by the village, you know, on the Mill Pond Park Lake, you know. Um, I don't know where all of them live, but, uh, uh, one of them lives over here on Walden Road, um, real close to Township Hall, so it's a, it's a, it's probably a pretty much, I don't, uh, pretty much an even split from the people I know, people that live out on the dirt roads and people that live, um, in the densest parts of the township right by the village, so it is a pretty diverse
Okay.
group.
Yeah, and you have people like, you have, uh, Jerry Fisher there, which you know have experience as a municipal attorney. You got Tom Patel, which is in the planning commission, I believe.
Yeah.
Uh, there's Cheryl Janaco, Cheryl is there. Cheryl is from precinct two, from Tendera. Kevin Buschro is right here. He lives right here in Walden. He was, was in the planning commission, so he has some ideas. He, he has some knowledge about planning. It's right there, um, I mean, Joette Kuntz, which Joette is very, you know, very involved. She's very, very optimist club and many close association groups that, she's in perseverance in Clarkson as well. I mean, she's involved. She have that knowledge. She volunteered in many events that pray of, of Clarkson and any other good, important events for us. So it's people that really care about the township and I think they're going to bring good knowledge and they're, what I really like about this group of people are really involved. Like, um, Chelsea O'Brien, for instance, she's the, you know, the president of the farm, the Clifton farm, yeah, which is very well attended and she's well liked among many residents here in Independence Township. So it's a great group, actually. I really like the group of people that we kind of appoint them. So actually Cheryl is here if you guys, um, have any questions, but. Any other questions?
I've got a comment. Um, Deanna Hunter is, um, representing the Blue Heron.
Oh, okay.
Um, so that's her, her thing. I did want to make a note that, um, Joette Kuntz's name was a typo on her name, the N and the U are reversed, just FYI. But, um, just from my point of view, I'm excited about it. I think it's, I think it's a good thing that we had that open space, uh, meeting at the planning commission. Ron was there. We had a great turnout from the residents. This is, uh, they asked to have some participation to find creative ways to, to gain more open space in the township and I think this is a great vessel to, to be able to do that. Is the representative from the,
trustee Richie, what?
Uh, the representative from the Blue Heron Conservatory, they, are they going to try to maintain somebody from, I guess, to me, that's a good organization to be on this. That's, I'm hoping that they would participate, she participated as, as part of that unit or that, um. I would hope that the supervisor would take that into it, you know, to consider that when the reappointments come, come through, for sure. I thought it was real important that, that, because they, she was at the meeting and reached out to see if she could participate. I, I've, we've had conversation with her and, uh, and that group before and I think it's a good, uh, good fit for the, for the group and hopefully they, they participate moving forwards.
Claire Newick?
I just wondered how you came about, uh, the expiration and who was with what expiration. You know, the, I know you rotated them between the one and three years.
Yeah, well, um, my office was contacted some of the candidates and then we asked them and.
Oh, you did ask the candidates?
My office did. My office, my office did.
Okay.
Not myself, my office, so.
So that was more on how long they were willing to serve?
Yeah.
Okay.
My office contacted them. My, my office was in contact with.
Okay.
As far as my knowledge, my office did that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I think it's great that you're, um, that there's a representative from the Parks and Rec that's, that's, um, mandated to participate in, in this, you know. I think that's a kind of another key thing to have somebody on the inside of that organization that, um, that you're expecting to, uh, to always be there, um, you know, kind of have somebody from the Ground Roots Parks Department involved in the, in the project, so I think that's cool.
Yeah, right. Trustee Stoney?
Uh, just a question. Gerald Fisher, is that the Jerry Fisher that was the previous supervisor?
Yes.
Um, not trying to ruffle any feathers, but just an honest question.
Sure.
He recently stepped down from the position, correct?
No, and he, he, he had.
Oh, he was unelected, okay.
Yeah.
Last election.
Yeah, he got appointed supervisor during a special election to the, with the board.
Okay.
And then he ran for the position.
Okay.
But can I make a comment?
Sure.
One thing about, um, Jerry is that he was the chairman of the Board of Oakland County Parks before he became the interim supervisor to fill the void, so he's got a huge amount of, besides, he's a municipal lawyer. But, you know, he's also was the head of the Oakland County Parks, so he brings a lot of, uh, probably knowledge, hopefully knowledge of how the county and other entities work because that was his, he was the head of the Oakland County Parks.
Okay.
Uh, when he was, you know, now that he's retired, he's, uh, you know, if he'll do this, that's great.
It's a voluntary work. Nobody gets paid, but each individual has some circle of knowledge about different issues, situations, experiences. They bring something to the table. We have former planning commissioners there, current planning commissioner there, members of large organizations that deal with different people for different areas like Sandy State, different areas of the township that I think is a good diversity and is going to bring something very important for us. Um, and this is nothing new. I was told there actually some communities already have a community like this in other townships, so. So it's nothing new that we're doing, but it's something that work out for other communities that we can actually bring our own reality that I think is going to work. And it's going to work because that, the type of people have, have very good people here. Very good professional people. Somebody would like, oh, well, anyone from the public would like to, any questions? Anyone from online? Everyone, everyone would like to make a motion?
I move to appoint Derek Smith, Sam Morocco, Chelsea O'Brien and, uh, is it Deanne or Hunter?
Yeah.
Uh, to the ROSAC Committee, uh, for three, uh, three-year term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Motion has made. Set.
I'll second.
Okay, motion has a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion B?
I'll make a motion. Uh, move to appoint, uh, Arnold Llewellyn, Eric Parker, Joette Kuntz and Joseph Sucker to the ROSAC Committee for a two-year term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second.
Okay, motion has made and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion Kerry. Motion C?
I'll make a motion to appoint Cheryl Giangcos, Gerald Fisher, Kevin Buschro and Tim, and Tom Patel to the ROSAC Committee for a one-year term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Support.
Okay, motion has made by Claire Newick and supported by trustee Morocco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, guys. Okay, communication of, well, we don't have closed session tonight, none, so communication of future agenda items reports. Number one, twenty-twenty-two actual to budget comments for period ending on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Two, report of Fire Department monthly report, January twenty-twenty-three. Three, Oakland County Sheriff Department monthly report, March twenty-twenty-three. Four, report of Building Department monthly report, March twenty-twenty-three. And five, minions, Information Technology oversight community, I D O C, March twenty-twenty-three. Board member comments?
I just want to update the board on the progress at the Brady Lodge, if that's okay. We actually got a furnace turned on today, so the first of the six furnaces are fired up so that the floor contractor can start the floor to try to be done by the deadline of May sixth. There's a family that has it rented, so that's always been kind of our target date. The roofing contractors right down to the last bit right now, and the insulation's done. We are waiting for a gas and electric upgrade to the building, because neither of those were sized properly to heat the structure. We had, Dave Moran had a department, Building Department's been working on that. Last word we got was by the twenty-seventh of this month, the gas service would be upgraded, so we would have enough gas to power up the six furnaces. Not that we really are planning needing the furnaces, but more the air conditioners as part of that setup, you know, coming, which we need electrical upgrades for the air conditioner, so. But anyway, everything's going good. If all goes well by the end of next week, the building, the Brady Lodge will be pretty much done with every, the, everything ready to accept renters to come in there. The water just got turned back on in the building. We didn't have any issues with any of the plumbing over the winter. So I'm sure Derek's got a lot of plans to get it ready. The window treatments were ordered. I don't know what the status is on those, that wasn't part of it, but the, at least the, the climate control is, is, is in for the most part. We're just waiting on mechanicals to fire everything up, so they, Nichols Heating and Cooling did an amazing job working with us over there, Oakland Electric, and the, just the, because we are under such pressure to get it done, a lot of guys had to work on top of each other, and everybody really has been super accommodating to try to meet this deadline. So that's where we're at with that.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you for your help. I mean, I, Bray Lodge is gonna be very, very important for all of us. And it's gonna be now four seasons venue for local residents and for seniors. That's gonna help a lot with the spacing, you know, local seniors are looking also for bigger facility for events. And we've done many events, and I remember, Terry, you were a sponsor of one of the events. If you recall, sometimes Bray Lodge, it was just one single season for events. And now it's gonna be four seasons thanks to the whole work and the support of the board. It's gonna be heating, cooling, it's gonna be great. It's gonna bring some revenues too, and it's gonna be available for everyone, and I want to again thank you, Sam, for helping out with this. I mean, I know you have been spending a lot of your time, and that's very good. And thank you to the whole board, sort of, because you guys support it, and it's a good thing. Okay, any other comments?
I just want to make a comment about the Fire Department report again. I guess I've said this a couple times, but I think it's, it should be key to the residents, I guess, to look at it, because when you read it, you'll see that fire is really not the main aspect of what our fire department does. It's EMS calls by far, like ten to one, do they do like EMS calls versus fire prevention or fire calls, so. Which, which is good, you know, we don't want any fires, but I mean, but I'm just saying that they, you know, we saw the chief talk about, you know, the training and everything that the people are going through that. So I mean, they, they get a lot of the use throughout the year, so. It makes a lot of runs and calls on emergencies, so.
And I agree with you, Ron, you're absolutely right, and Chief Pichet is doing a great job with the guys, keeping up with all, you know, good services and, and good response. I, I believe I saw a report while we were in the top ten best fire departments in the state of Michigan, and we were in the top twenty best safest city in the state of Michigan overall, and we're gonna keep up, hopefully, going up, you know. We, we have a great work, we get employees, good services, so I'm gonna thank you all the board for, for their support. Any other comments, please, no?
I have, I have a.
Oh, sure, trustee Alamat.
Based on what Ron brought up, because those guys were busy this morning. And I just want to say that our prayers are with everybody involved in those accidents. The weather was horrible this morning, and people still need to be careful. It is still winter. There was a lot of black ice. We had a lot of accidents this morning, and our departments were very busy out there, so we hope everyone's okay, but it's just a thing in the back of your mind, just because we had eighties one day. It's still, you know, you see snow in this cold weather, so just be careful.
Thank you, trustee Alamat, and you're a hundred percent right. All right. Any other motion to adjourn?
We'll adjourn. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.